As a school would have to pay annual salaries without any incoming revenue. Uncertain future. The program's future is uncertain due to a number of factors, including the challenge of attracting new applicants, coupled with the fact that all community college nursing programs are free, and we're still a tuition-based program. Securing necessary funding. We did a detailed review of the current reserves, and there's not enough in there to maintain a full staff for a year without any incoming tuition. Maintaining qualified staff. All adjuncts would be essentially laid off. There's no hope that they will all come back when we were to start a new program, as well as the retirement of the current director and several programs around the state looking for directors of their PM programs. And ultimately satisfying requirements for accreditation and approval on that. Given these challenges, the suspension of new admissions, the loss of a full year of tuition revenue, and a financial operation uncertainty. So with heavy heart, the superintendent and business manager recommend that the school committee vote to close the PM academy. This recommendation is based on a detailed review of the program's financial reserves and its precarious future. For further information, there's a detailed synopsis of the Massborn Oversight and Programmatic Developments concerning the Bay Path Practical Nursing Academy.
Thanks for that. That's what I was going to say. Or in some discussion here, so we're going to hold...
Some move?
Well, no.
You got to hold up?
Well, we can do a motion for discussion purposes.
Right.
So entertaining a motion?
Some move.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Okay, discussion.
What regulatory standards were not met?
So there's a...
This obviously came as a complete surprise.
It was. The synopsis identifies the back and forth with ORN. ORN is a regulatory board that answers only, is appointed by the governor, so it doesn't answer the Health and Human Services. I can say that it began with a graduation rate, first-time passing rate on the NCLEX of our graduates below 80%. So in COVID, we slipped below 80% into the 73%, 74% category. So we put progress reports in place, a progress plan on improving that. But that's the benchmark, 80% first-time pass rate on that. I can tell you that class of 2022 has a 100% pass rate now. It was a 73% first time, but as of the date, 100% have passed. Same with 2023, was like a 73%, 74% first-time pass rate. Subsequently, we're down to an 86% pass rate. So think of the percentages out of 40. That's, you know, less than four students who didn't pass it their first time or haven't passed it yet. And looking at that and talking with the director as well as the staff, the longer student waits to take the NCLEX after graduation, the less their chances are of passing. The best pass rate is taking it as soon as the program, as soon as you can after program completion. So we put some things in place to address that. This year alone, we had ATI, which is the testing agency, come in and offer a refresher course before the graduation. We had 40 graduates this year. So they were treated through a refresher course on that, and we instituted what's called VADI. It's a virtual ATI. It attracts the student's progress, and it gives them a green light when they, you know, so they have free access to this, and they've had it from the end, towards the end of the program until today. So the students can log on, take the practice exam, and it says, you get in there, and then when they get to the point and it says, "Green light, go," a first graduate, you know, passed on a first time. So the director's been monitoring that. That doesn't mean anything because, you know, they've already made their decision, and we won't have those reports. They're basing on past three years of a below 80% graduation rate. But I can tell you that two-day, 2022, 100%, 86% on 23, and 24 as, you know, in the 80s, mid-80s for the complete pass rate. So there's, I think, no more than six total students between the last two years who haven't passed it yet. There's a number of other reasons we've addressed that. You know, something that the state did, and this is what's so kind of hypocritical and ironic, the state, because of the need for nurses, allowed and voted to allow graduates of nursing programs to now work as an RN or a PM before passing the NCLEX exam. Before, you could not practice until you pass the NCLEX, which is a national nursing exam, for whatever level of nursing, PN, RN, MSN. They allow now, with graduation, you can work under a registered nurse for up to a year. The economic status of many of our students is low. The opportunity to go out and make $30 an hour as a PM is more appealing than taking two months off to study for an exam. So they start working to better their financial status, but what they're doing is harming their chances of becoming licensed, and then the longevity of working at that rate is extended immensely having that license. So it kind of works against us in that regard. So we've had that going, but we've achieved approval status every year. We had an unfounded claim of discrimination, and it went first to the DOJ. We provided all the information, third-party identifiers through a third party. DOJ said completely unfounded. There is no discrimination, which we knew all along. And then that was it. DOJ said, "You're fine. No claims on that." An anonymous complaint was made to Massborn, and they accept anonymous complaints, so they addressed it. And we said, "Oh, here's everything we just went through with the DOJ. We'll give you that." And they said, "No, we do our own." They came out and found nothing, and a second one was announced. So same thing, there was no foundation for any of that. But they said, "Oh, it's been five years since we've done an onsite visit. We'll come out and visit you." So they came out in March, March 20, don't hold me to the date, it's in the synopsis, around March 23rd, 27th. Time frame, we did an exit interview, they went through everything, thought everything went well, we had all the documentation, we had the interview, identified a few things as a SEP, and that's a, something educational plan. I forget what the S stands for. The SEP is what we're going to do for the program in a year, and that includes what we're doing to increase first-time pass rate, as well as the curriculum and clinical rotations and all that. So the data, which has pass rate, historical pass rates and graduation rates, was not included in the SEP. We had it all separate and gave them all of that. They said it has to be included in the SEP, so the faculty has to develop the SEP. So we're working with the faculty to develop and include and put the narrative with all of that in. So we're like, "Oh, that's great. We started working on that." They identified three clinicals that they said we weren't doing. One was mental health, which we were, but it wasn't defined, maternity and pediatrics. So we said, "Great, we'll work on those." Before, within two weeks, we had secured pediatrics and mental health clinicals, and we had agreements on those. Maternity across the state, nobody allows PNs in it, and that's, I mean, look at any other regional vocational schools, they're deficient in providing a clinical experience for maternity. They just don't allow PNs into the maternity ward on that. So we're still working on that, and we're showing all the efforts that were being made to secure that, the denials, the requests, the denials and this and that. And then they had a couple of facilities things that they said, the space, we need headboards above the beds to simulate oxygen and that goes. So we ordered those and showed them to PO. I think we ordered three of those immediately and said, "Here they are, they're on order, we'll install them as soon as they come in." And they said we only had one maternity SIM baby simulation mannequin, and we showed them one, but we told them we had six in storage because we weren't teaching it at the time. So we had adequate number of SIM babies as well as SIM mans. So we had started addressing everything they wanted. We went to the June meeting, we didn't get the final report, that was the exit report. We started working on all of that, sending them documentation. That was March. They notify us that we'll be on the June 11th board meeting, so the director and myself joined the June 11th meeting. They gave us no opportunity to talk, and the field rep read a litany of CMR violations or noncompliance. We couldn't address it because we had no knowledge of that, it was presented to them and not to us. So the board voted to put us on approval with warning, and then suspend our admissions until, they just picked our January 1st date. It was apparent, and I know it's public, it's nothing I haven't said to the secretary of, you know, Occupational Education, as well as threw them to the Health and Human Services. The board meeting was a board meeting that I've never quite experienced. It was unprofessional. The reading of some of the findings, there was met with huffs and high rolls and, oh my gods, to questions that, "I don't even see the RN pass rate on NCLEX in here." And we said, "Excuse me, ma'am, that's because we're a PN-only program." To, it was clear that they really didn't understand what they were looking at or what our program was, because they wanted to know how many students were continuing on, and we said, "We're a 10-month program. They all graduate?" Well, they don't graduate, so nobody continues on. There's no second-year PN student on this, to the fact that they didn't know it was a 10-month program and this and that. So there are a lot of miscommunications. They voted, and I said, I tried to talk several times, they wouldn't allow me. They took the vote to approval with warning and suspend their admissions to December, and I explained afterwards, they allowed me to speak, and I explained that. Suspending it essentially puts a financial burden that quite honestly could end with the closing of this program, because we can't maintain a staff without income, it's tuition-based, and the revolving account reserves is very narrow on that. And it was interesting because a colleague, a school of ours had requested a voluntary pause in their admissions because of things going on with their program, and they wouldn't allow them to pause. And they said, "No, you can't pause." And it was like, "You can't make us hold the class when we don't have people." So I said, "That puts a financial burden." Quite honestly, our colleagues wanted a voluntary pause, and you wouldn't allow them to pause, and we're asking, "Please don't pause us, we'll address everything you need us to address." We had 40 accepted students and close to $50,000 in tuition already deposited to start the school year, and it was met by the chair that, well, let me be perfectly clear, they asked for a pause, we managed this pause, have a good day, sir. And they're like, "Okay." We didn't end there, we talked to our legislators afterwards, and we were able to get on a July meeting. They notified us on June 24th that we were going to present on the July 9th meeting again, reconsideration before the board. They wanted all documentation submitted by the end of June 27th, the day they notified us, we'd be on there. I was on personal leave, and Gretlen, our director, was accompanying two PN students at the National Skills USA Competition, because they were the Massachusetts champions in technical skills, the quality of the nurses that we put out there. So Gretlen asked if she could apply for an extension. I said, "With all my approval, yes, please do, and let them know our circumstances." They granted a four-hour, they said, "Fine. The board needs it by Monday at noon." So we submitted all the documentation of the changes we made to date, and I said, "Just keep submitting anything that we've addressed up until that meeting." So we submitted a whole host of information to them, and it was a, again, a fruitless meeting. They wouldn't allow us to talk. I tried to talk, they said, "Excuse us, don't interrupt the board while we're deliberating, you'll have time at the end to talk." At the end of their discussion, she moved for a vote. I said, "Excuse me, I thought I'd have time to talk." She said, "You will." I said, "To be clear." After the vote, she said, "Yes." Their attorney, I think, saw that that was improper, interjected, because they have an attorney on the call, and said, "Let me summarize to date where we are." And then at the end of her summary, which we all knew because we're all part of it, she said, "You may consider allowing the gentleman to speak before you vote." So they allowed me to speak, which they really didn't care, voted to keep us in the same position on it. And they say, quite honestly, financials are not our responsibility, and that's on you. And so they put us in this position, we immediately notified, because we were delaying these poor students, because they were saying, "Will we start? What's the status?" And so upon the closure of that meeting, I was working with Assistant Secretary of one of the department cabinets, and he said, "Give me 24 hours, Kyle, before you make a decision." I waited the 24. Unfortunate, Health and Human Services Secretary stepped down, and now is our go-to person on that. So hope was lost on having any more reconsideration by the board to allow us to start the program this year. So now we're in the position that in order to make this happen, we have to keep our full-time staff on full-time to do these reports, monthly reports that ORN wants from us, as well as the COE came out in April, after COE is the Council of Educational Education for our reaffirmation meeting, because they approve us to receive veterans' affairs money and that, and they came out, and we had great timing, they actually said, "Can we copy some of this and do this?" So this now, we can't, they can't bless us because we don't have the board of registration, they're saying, so it's a catch-22, and they want a full report. So efforts to maintain that. And try to pull some people in in January, which is deplete our funds. We can't use general funds because it wasn't budgeted for, nor is it a daytime program for, you know, school-aged children, it's a post-secondary and L program. So if we were to exhaust those funds, the district would be in some financial liability here without a way to meet them because of our general fund doesn't allow for that. So that's why I say with a heavy heart, we exhausted our political poll, and we've tried to appeal to ORN on this. We're not alone, another district will be closing their program, and I don't say that as, you know, anything other than we have put forth a great effort to meet their demands. And it was just weird, we talked to other people, it was a weird meeting, as if this was predetermined what the outcome of this would be. And the uncertainties are real, that the number of applicants and the volume of applicants, because all our community colleges are free, you know, and we're tuition-based. We are working through MAVA. James Brosnan is the spokesperson for the regional vocational practical nursing programs to get some relief on that, because we are state, we're all state agencies or public agencies, so if they're reimbursing PNs at the community colleges, there should be some reimbursement at the vocational, regional vocational school programs as well. So far, that's fallen flat. He's still pursuing that avenue, but, you know, the horizon doesn't look good that we'll get any relief in the community colleges, we'll continue to be fully funded on that though. So if we were to look through this year, which is, again, I went through with breath on our director and our business manager, and to maintain those funds, we'd deplete our reserves before the end of this, what would have been the academic year for practical nursing, and then we'd have no funds to start the school year on that. So that's a lengthy discussion, but I think it's important that you know that we worked, you know, tirelessly, and we worked blindsided on June 11th at that meeting, based on the information that was given to us at the exit interview.
Thank you, Kyle. I'm sure that there are...
Now you don't have to read the synopsis, but if you want to...
Any other discussion?
Good to hear. What, if any, options are there for the 40 accepted students, any possibilities for them to, are the programs at this date, or is it already...
Due to late date, unfortunately, probably not. We did share with them, Quinsigman, all our area, Acovit, Blackstone, we shared the regional schools that have programs, but usually they're signing up now. We shared with them the community colleges within, you know, the area that do that. So we shared out with all of them with the unfortunate news and their refunds, that these are the programs that you can apply to. Whether they accept our acceptance or not, they don't have to, they have their own admissions, but the T's test should, they have to take T's tests, they should, they could, tell them no after they apply, and stuff like that, but yeah, we shared out all of that information to them. We relayed that, and that was, so the first board ORN meeting in June, the program that went before us, they were concerned, "Did anybody apply for next year's program?" And they said, "We had 17 applicants," and they said, "Well, you can't close, what are you going to do with that?" And I said, you know, there were 17, they shared all their region, you know, school, regional area PN programs. And here, I said, "We have 40 ready to go." I tried the tactic that when we received the official notification from the board, which was four days after the June 11th meeting, the way I read it, my interpretation was, "We're approved with warning." So we're approved to run the program. We have to cease admissions until January 1st. It said, "Our current PN class of 26 admissions is completed, they were accepted, we start August." So we can, so I said, "Is my interpretation correct? We can start this year because we're approved with warning, and we just can't start admissions for the BN class of 27 until we meet all your obligations?" And they said, "Nope." So I said, "Then I respectfully request," because I appealed to Hansella, the field rep, that we get on the board's agenda, and that's when we're notified on June 27th that we would be on the July 9th meeting. So I tried to work within the bounds of their letter, and they said, "No." So those 40, and through the whole time, it was just, it was horrible for us because we weren't going to tell them, we were hoping beyond hope that we would appeal, because it's a success of the program. I stand on, you know, the director does, and our faculty and staff do an amazing job with those students. If you went to the graduation, which we did in June, just after June 11th, and those 40 graduates, 38 graduates were so proud of their accomplishments. We're really hopeful that the first-time pass rate would have seen an increase this year, but it's kind of a moot point right now.
Thank you, Kyle.
Good to hear.
Yes.
Other than being able to provide that service to our towns and beyond that, how did we benefit from that program? I mean, it's always a feather in our cap when we send those students off to Skills USA, and we've got a history of that. And we've got a history, frankly, I think, of running a decent program. Outside of that, fiscally, monetarily, is there any benefit to the district? And not to downplay the service that we provide, because I think that was awesome. And looking at some of those graduating classes, I don't know that some of those students wouldn't have had the same opportunities and the same attention that they got here in the program. So I appreciate that, and not trying to downplay that, but how do we benefit as a district as we think about closing the program?
Yeah, no, well, through the chair, well said, George. The district doesn't benefit. It doesn't benefit. The revolving account is solely for the perpetuation of that program, so we don't benefit. I would say marginally, we benefit, and the headboards that we ordered, the day students could use those. Sometimes, you know, the six babies that we got for them, the day students could use that. But they also benefit on the flip side, when we have Perkins money and we can buy, you know, some new equipment for the day students, the nurses can use that, the PN students can use that at night as well. It's a, you summarize it great, it's a huge community service in that they're providing, you know, 38, 40, you know, practical nurses that are going to go out there, we're giving opportunities for, you know, the CNAs typically to, you know, scale up and get a higher-paying job. And every year that I've gone to the graduations, there's a former student who's now an MSN, and maybe a charge nurse who's speaking and talking about this was the spring board that got them into nursing. And I don't have to tell you, you see it if you pick up the Charlton, you know, Town Paper, the Southbridge Times, and all of those, every week, there's a community service as well as an accolade from a graduate on that. So it's shocking to Rep Marcy and, you know, Senator Fattman that this is happening, you know, and they're like, "What can we do?" But there's nothing, the ORN rules over that, and that was their decision. We don't benefit financially from it, you know, in any way. It's interesting, too, that, you know, only 30% of our students come from our 10-town, so we're getting 70% from outside. So they are driving here and bypassing Acovit and Blackstone to come to the board, and I think that speaks volumes as well, but, you know, did I answer it?
Yeah, that answered the question, and I would agree, and I just would add, and not that I'm excited about the prospect of closing the program, but I would add, look at what we're putting into it above and beyond the actual teaching and learning that's happening in that program. I mean, all the stress that you and Jim and the director of the program that have gone through over this and all those visits, frankly, again, and I'm not happy about the closing of the program, but what is that taking away from our daytime program, our daytime students? That's time and effort that could be spent elsewhere. Again, I'm not advocating, I'm just putting that up there.
Thank you, George. Any other comments, thoughts?
I have one comment. So what's your take on it, Kyle? The end for the high schools not to do it, or what? Or vocational schools not to do it?
Yes, my take, personal, so that's probably, my personal take is there's something afoot on regional vocational schools, because of, you know, the other one that I know of will be closing, and another one, they cut their admissions in half. They operate a evening and a day program, and they cut both those programs in half, and they're going to be financially strapped to continue their program as well. I'm not saying that they made any decision on which way they're going, but they were advocating right along with us as well, you know. It's hard for me to say what it is, maybe, I don't know, it would only be speculation on my part. I just know that it was weird meetings, and I'm not the only one, because the director of CT reached out to me the very next day. Yeah, we were going to the retirement party, and in the parking lot, I got a call, I answered it, and said, "Tell me about the meeting yesterday." And I said, "Oh my God," and she's like, "How do you know?" And she said, "I got a number of calls from that meeting." So I talked to her. Not that CT has anything to do with it, but got me in touch with one of the assistant deputy secretaries, undersecretary, it is sort of, undersecretary, and he indicated he was going to work with the Health and Human Services, but also, you know, kind of couched that with the fact that they don't answer to the Health and Human Services, they answer only to the governor, and they operate independently. So, yeah, nobody has that much board.
Any other questions, comments?
Is it likely that the higher learning institutions of nursing programs don't want vocational schools teaching nursing?
I don't know. With my past and my previous district, we worked very well with our community college, and they utilized our facilities in the evening. We had a great relationship with them. I don't know why they wouldn't welcome some kind of assistance or participation with this and sharing of it, because there's a waitlist, you know, and I think it's a two-year waitlist to get into the BN Academy at Quinsigman Community College, and that's after you have your prereqs done. So I don't know whether they're going to train these nurses, you know, and I think on a whole, there's been a lot of numbers in my head lately, but we, if I'm correct, the regional vocational schools produce more graduate PNs than the community colleges combined across the state. So that's a big deficit if they're looking to eliminate regional vocational school PN programs across the board. And like George said, we do these as a service to the community, because it doesn't, we don't get a financial windfall. There is a lot, you know, we have a director, but a lot, all the grievances fall on the superintendent, you know, custodial, all of that stuff is picked up by the operating fund of the schools, so, you know, space is dedicated to that program. That doesn't benefit our mission for the day students on that. We do a great service outside of that with the CTI programs and our evening schools, and those partnerships benefit the programs in, you know, in that we have material and we can upscale our underemployed and unemployed population, we'll continue that. You know, it's embargoed, but I share the information with you all on the CTI, and that certain number of our admin will be traveling tomorrow for an award ceremony and that. So we continue to provide those services for the, you know, our central mass workforce blueprint and feeding those industries with our CTI program, as well as our electric pump trades at night, you know, so as a whole, the state should be embracing what we're doing, expanding it, just like... So as a whole, the state should be embracing what we're doing, expanding it, just like you just created opportunities for the 11,000 students on the list across the state.
Are we going to keep the nursing program?
That's what we are here to decide tonight. My recommendation, the business manager's recommendation, is to close the program.
When I was in Georgia on the skills, when we got the information about our nursing program having difficulties, my daughter's a professor in two colleges, teaches nursing. So I asked her the point blank questions, and she said that the upper scholastic part is having difficulty getting people into their courses because of the vocational school programs that are around that I'm sure are less costly. And being the business situation, that's the situation, and I was wondering if that was something that was causing us to have a problem of so many, you know, you can't talk, what they're going to tell you and so forth and so on, which is a very disruptive way to do any kind of a program situation, you know. But that's what they're carrying on as. Massachusetts is not number one in the whole situation of niceties, you know.
Through the chair. It's reversed for Massachusetts, so the community colleges are free tuition now, so they can go there. If you get on a waitlist, and a lot will choose to wait a year or two to get into a program if it's going to save them $11,000, our program, you know, is a tuition program. So if you get on a list or get into a program, and that's the other thing, you know, those that, you know, pass the Ts first time and have no problem academically will get into those programs, because it's not a lottery for a community college, it's a selective criteria. So the quality of applicants we get, you know, is going down as well. So there's a lot of uncertainty, so that's what the recommendation is based on. Not the quality, not how the program was run. It's based that we've been put in a financial situation with a precarious future, that if we continue to fund this, know that the closing of the program has ongoing expenses. Our adjunct professors are adjunct, they get paid when they teach however, they've been doing it regularly. So they are entitled, most likely will get unemployment. And so that's 60% of what they've been making historically, that we have to pay for 26 weeks. So we, as a municipality, pay dollar for dollar, there's no unemployment insurance. So we carry that burden until they exhaust that. And then if we maintain the full-time staff to do the full closeout, then they're entitled as well on the flip side. So we have to keep in reserves that money to pay unemployment. We can't take that run out and then take it from a general fund, we can't cross that. So that's why I sat with our, you know, business manager and the director, we went back and forth on all of this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Al. Any other questions, thoughts, comments?
Just one. So Mr. Brennan, this information you presented is very detailed, we haven't really had a chance to look through it a lot at this point, but you had said there are other reasons, are there other reasons besides what's here? So when we go home tonight, this is the real reason why the state just told you you could not hold a class until January?
Yeah, I think I captured it, there's a detailed synopsis that the director put together that we submitted to the COE. And that's why I said, you know, it's in there. And I know it's short notice, but, you know, we got to make a decision on what we do so that we don't exhaust the reserves and get into a situation on it. And I've worked with Cindy on it, and I've talked with Bethel about it as well on the outcome. But if, well, we get a vote tonight, but yeah, I believe I summarized it as best I can.
Okay, I agree, it just seems, you know, I understand the pass rate, that's important.
It is important, but that's why I took a lengthy explanation, because to me, and I know they had the arbitrary 80% first time pass rate, but to me, 73% filling the pipeline is better than zero.
And when you had 38 kids last year graduate out of a class that started at 40?
Mm-hmm.
Most of them, that's awesome. I mean, none of them passed as a test the first time.
So that's why I felt it important to share that. Yes, it is 73, and I understand that. The SAP, you know, strategic educational plan, all the data, you have all the data, you have to incorporate it in the SAP. The clinicals are the clinicals, and we'll hang the hat that we don't have a maternity entry requested, but Breland did all her research. And there's 11,000 nurses waiting to get a maternity clinical. And the number of maternity wards was, there's no possible way all the nurses can rotate through a clinical or maternity ward. And not to mention, like, UMass won't let them PN to the maternity ward. Harrington closed that, we looked at, you know, Planned Parenthood.
Blood strip laws.
Yeah, and we're looking at, you know, some of the, you know, other agencies that help pregnant women to get in there. And it's just like, ah, we're good, because everybody else is looking as well. And they just mandated that a year ago on that. So they gave us a give it, go out and find a maternity when there's a benefit on it. But mental health is locked up, closed in, pediatrics locked up, closed in within a couple of weeks of the exit review. And we presented that, we got two out of three, you know. So it's just, I think I covered everything.
Okay. Any other questions?
One question, just, just to summarize, this is a finance, strictly a financial bug. We don't have money enough to carry this program on, we've got to end it. We're, you know, emotional, okay, it's too bad, it's unfortunate, but somebody's got a big check to write tonight. Time to move on.
Yep. Okay, we currently have a motion on the table and seconded to close the PN Academy. So go ahead, put a vote on that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstent.
What was that?
I abstained.
Okay. No abstention. Motion passes. Thank you, Kyle, for the detailed background on that. Okay, down to subcommittee reports. I'm not sure if we have any.
I've got a report from the superintendent.
Oh, do you want to go do it now or after? Go ahead.
It usually comes up next.
All right, do it.
Down to the chair, I sent a written superintendent's report, just finding a couple things I just want to add on that. So real quick, we had a robust summer this year, we had, you know, credit recovery, which 28 credits with all students passing and eligible for promotion. I want to call out that we had one senior who recovered the credits and graduated, so we held our own little mini graduation for that student. Guy, Trevor Short pulled it together. Real short, we had a cake, we invited his family in, and we invited all the other students in the summer program to come and the staff. And, you know, the principal's here, he can talk to how much that filled him and his family, and dare I say, the other students, they're cut that day. It was wonderful. He was so thrilled for the support and the perseverance and the encouragement to stay the course. So that was a great moment for that program when he graduated on that.
Last of Reddick, do you see him?
No. No, we made our mark. So that was a nice day. Kudos to everybody, and I listed all their names out on who participated in the recovery as well as the steps to success. Nearly 20 students participated in the steps to success, that's MCAS. Yes, it's still, we try to get them over it because that's the easiest way to meet the graduation requirements, competency determination is what they're calling it now. So we saw initial data, those students signed, every student tested pre and post, but indicated growth in math of 50% of the students, significant growth in ELA, and science, 44% of the students on that. So good success on that. We had a great administrative retreat this summer, so we're all, like I said, we're all united, we're looking forward to a year of unity and growth on that. So we're all pistons are firing there. I do want to call out Liz Ortiz is our new assistant principal, appointed after the retreat, but looking forward to her joining the team going forward and doing that. And we have many of our administrators here tonight as well. Caddo Skills Modernization Grant is coming out, the Mala Annual Summer Retreat is this week. So some really important things coming up there that our administrators are going to be attending. Admissions, so you know that we're going to a lottery, it's the first year on that. There's going to be some recommendations to the policy on coming into alignment with the new admissions. We have some things that we need to change. We're really eager to attend one of the sessions where they have some model policies put together based on the new admissions program, so stay tuned for that. As well as how we leverage, because there's now $110 million for the skills and lab modernization grants that come out. Not 110 is available to regional vocational schools, 30 million will be available for expansion of CTE programming at the comprehensive schools. So there's still a lot of money left on there, so we're going to be attending how to leverage that. And just this afternoon was a webinar on how to apply for those. So up to $5 million for a lab modernization. So we'll be looking to put in a proposal for that, so stay tuned on that. A huge success, and Chad had to leave for a family, oh no, oh my goodness, I apologize to your family. Chad present is our new building grounds director. And thankfully, you all approved that we hire a student, help for the summer to offset and do some of the things that we would like to do but didn't have time to do. Nine students, Monica Alvarez Rivera, Jacob Pratt, Jacob Perry, Natalie Inglis, Cole Paradise, Michael Laverro Jr., Colin McElvein, Josh Jeffers, and Marcus Feliciano are the students that we hired. It's incredible to see them working. And every time I walk out, they're working. I encourage you, I put some pictures in, they're black and white, doesn't do it justice. Walk around and see, you saw some of the, you know, wet painted sides, those are all the students, they painted the hand railings, the parking lot balusters, they sanded those down, those were rusty, and they were horrible. They're Bay Path purple now, they painted the lines, the numbers in the lot. They were on, you name the equipment, they were on it and they were just going. So we cleared up sightlines, we trimmed trees, we took down, cleared out all the weeds, invasive species. This, next week is their last week, so.
15th is the last.
15th is the last day. But they've, you know, worked great with our full-time staff and, yeah, so everybody I talked to said, it's amazing what they're doing, thank you for bringing them on. He posted social media in the comments, that's my son, he loves his job, and this is amazing. So really good stuff is happening, I want to call out what they're doing on that. A lot of big things are happening, they listed all the stuff we're doing. We got an irrigation system that 80%, Chad? 80%? We just got to hook it up to the water. We'll be able to water the fields, get some grass out there, keep that going. Gym floor will be refinished just after the start of the school year, we have plans to relocate, by that gets done, so a brand-new gym floor, it'll look just like when they opened the renovations on that. Equipment's being installed that we ordered, so a lot of good things are happening inside the building. And we're looking to a brave year.
All right. Now here's a quiz for you. Now if I wanted to use some Bay Path purple, what Benjamin Moore code is that?
We're working.
That's your Sherman Williams.
What's that?
Sherman Williams.
Okay.
We're going to get you the code because we're going to standardize all that. Our logo and our colors, we will have a color code, the Bay Path yellow, Bay Path purple. So we are working on having that code, and if anybody wants to use the logo, they use this.
That's good, that's good. I'm sure there's a few different purples. All right, thank you, Kyle. All right, down to subcommittee reports. I'm not sure if we have any, there's nothing for audit. Mr. Shore, do you have anything for budget?
Nothing for budget.
Nothing for budget, okay. Don Montville for Buildings and Grounds, anything?
Nothing.
Okay, we're moving quick. Davis not here, I don't know if there's anything for negotiations. Eric Dunn, Paul Zee, Peter is not here.
Yes, we did have a meeting this evening, and the committee is going to make a final review of the revisions that we worked on since May of '24. And we're planning to have the information to you in September for your preview, review. It should be about that then. So we figured that's an overnight assignment.
Where we go?
Thank you.
You're welcome, welcome. That's it, okay. For future business, our next meeting date is on Tuesday, no, Tuesday, September 2nd. That fits right after Memorial Day. Memorial Day, Labor Day, excuse me. Any topics naturally for the future agenda, let us know. Any more comments for you, Kyle? Should I go around and ask?
No, I do have one more. Skills USA, you know, we sent a contingency down there, just have an update. We're proud to recognize the outstanding accomplishments of the student competitors at the 2025 National Leadership Skills Conference in Atlanta, representing both secretary and both post-secondary divisions. Bay Path students showcase their career technical education skills on the national stage, bring home top 10 finishes in several events. So in the high school division, we were represented by three standout students, Jamison Burke Humming earned fourth place nationally, demonstrating exceptional technical skill and professionalism in one of the most competitive trades in Atlanta. So congratulations to Jamison. Nay Ray Vincent Van Damme, web design and development placed sixth as a team showcasing innovation, collaboration, and advanced web development proficiency. So these numbers are national, so fourth in the nation and sixth in the nation. Bay Path's post-secondary licensed practical nursing program also excelled with two students winning national recognition. Ashley Brinkon placed 10th in medical terminology, reflecting her strong foundation in clinical language and healthcare knowledge. And Luis Noggi earned sixth place in first aid CPR, demonstrating critical life-saving skills under pressure on those. So I want to call those individuals out and the staff, as well as the school committee who went down and participated in judging and shepherding our students on that. And I want to welcome all of our new members today.
Yes, welcome. And thanks everyone in the audience for attending as well. So we're going to go around the room now, we'll start over here.
Not much, just welcome to all the new members, like old members.
Returning.
Ashley, Ash.
Yes, exactly, yes.
Welcome and looking forward to a good year.
Welcome to all the new administrators, and wishing all of the administrators here a successful, happy school year. And welcome to the new members of the committee, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thank you, administrators, for delicious barbecue tonight, keeping up a nice tradition. And welcome back, Mr. Clark, back to Bay Path, and Kristen is you as well, welcome back.
Well, I welcome our two new members, and getting back to the swing of things, help this school go forward and meet all the challenges that are ahead of us. And I think we're all on the same page, and it makes us feel very comfortable to be able to work that kind of a situation together. Thank you.
Welcome to all the new players. It's a wild ride. Buckle up. I would be wrong if I said I'm disappointed that we're going to do away with the nursing program, being the father of a registered nurse that went through the hard way of getting her accreditation. The one thing I would like to see us continue and find a way to continue would be that publicized, the publicity that was in the newspapers on a regular basis, if we can segue that into some of our other programs and our daily programs or something. Because I get more comments about how, you know, the regular articles and all, like the new leader and the Spencer, Spencer New Leader, Southridge Current, or whatever they are. But you know what I'm saying. So if we could find a way to figure out that formula and, you know, continue it, I think it would be more than beneficial for us as a vocational school to keep us above board and, you know, and everybody's mind. Okay, thank you.
George?
Just thank you to the new administrators, welcome aboard, welcome to the teachers, welcome to the new school community members. Thank you to administrators for preparing that nice meal for us. And to all the newcomers here, as Jim said, it can be a little challenging sometimes, but it's a great community and I think we enjoy it very much.
Congratulations, everybody. Congratulations, Lizzo, on your new position here. I'm looking forward to see what kind of great stuff. I'm looking forward to see what kind of great stuff comes out of this school year, and seeing good things. Your...
Oh, thanks, thank you. Just two comments. Richard Clark does have a very famous daughter, first name Caitlin, and she was quite a basketball player in Chicago, but no relation.
Well, related to millions.
Second of all, I have no idea where my brother is this evening, it is his 75th birthday today.
Oh, wow!
There may be a connection there, but we guess him.
Tim, as the other Paxton representative, I'm happy to report, I have notified the property, the proper authorities, and he will be here next time.
Thank you.
Welcome, all the new people, and I am sad about the nursing program, but I certainly understand what it's like in school.
Yeah, same thing about the nursing program, it seemed to be very successful, I mean, maybe we didn't have the greatest graduation rates, but as you say, look like bodies are tough here, really unfortunate, but it's also really expensive, nobody's writing a check for it. And congratulations to the, welcome aboard, the new people. Hope you enjoy it.
I want to say thanks to Eileen for bringing in the wonderful photos, looks like you had a wonderful time, and the kids, I'm sure, will have those memories for a lifetime. Thank you so much for your dedication to the kids. I appreciate that.
Well, I would like to thank everybody for their welcome, never been welcomed to home so many times in my life, I don't believe. Obviously, I'd like to thank voters, and thirdly, I think the move was to get me out of town at least one might have learned, and I succeeded in that. And I recall the comments of the gentleman from North Perfield, that was a constant item, if you will, in regards to the nursing program, and a bunch of times, smiling faces, happy faces, boards, accolades, all sorts of wonderful things, and keeping that going in some fashion, if you will, I think is worthwhile, definitely, if it can't be nursing, that's certainly something, or anything else.
Again, thank you. And Mr. Brennan, thank you very much, you provided me with a $25 tour last month, I appreciate that. It's amazing to see the building, it is absolutely incredible facility, and the town certainly have reason to be proud, I mean, it is so clean, it's almost amazing, it's almost surgical room clean, as you know. Thank you.
I want to take the opportunity to wish everyone a great school year, looking forward to this New Year's successes. It's nice to be back here at Bay Path up on the hill. It was a good sabbatical, but had the opportunity to come back and join you, and look forward to being here for the next few years, hopefully my last year before retirement, but great to see everybody, and thank you for all your efforts, it shows every year at graduation. So have a great year.
I just want to say thank you for everybody's welcoming, and I also wanted to say that I'm thankful for the Southridge voters and also Helen Lenti, and I'm looking forward for months to come.
Thank you.
Welcome, new committee members, new faculty, thanks for a great evening, great dinner, thank you, and look forward to success this year.
All right, just want to thank everyone for coming, I wish you a great school year coming up, and thank you very much for cooking us dinner, you can always buy me off with Klondike bar, so that's very much, that's somebody right on, right on that, so very much appreciate that.
Motion to adjourn?
Or ice cream sandwich, or any of those things. All right, we're going to move on.
Motion to adjourn?
What's that?
Motion to adjourn.
Boy, I can either, that's my job, I entertain a motion to adjourns.
One hour, 10 minutes, Jeff, not that.
What's that? Okay, one, that's right. Thanks for watching. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.